Call the meeting to order. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Dango?
Here.
Gary?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Shire?
Here.
Mayor Beadie?
Here. Are there any changes to the agenda? There are none. We will, um, excuse me, open the floor to public comment. If you have comment for the council, you're welcome to step forward to the podium, state your name, and you do have a three-minute time limit.
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Bill Phelan. First off, I just want to reiterate kind of what I said last week about, I obviously don't doubt anybody's commitment, you know, that's sitting up there tonight, that's their commitment to Streeter. I know you all put a lot of hours in and a lot of thought into everything that goes on in the city. I know the climate in this country doesn't exactly encourage respectful discourse and disagreement all the time, and that's all I'm trying to do here tonight is disagree respectfully, specifically when it comes to the Vex proposal. It's not really that easy for me to get up here and speak like this. I think my nature's a little more just getting along with people. You know, most weekends, I'm working with couples who are getting married, helping people celebrate, smoothing things over, not exactly starting things up. So believe me, I'd really rather be anywhere else tonight. This project, this one thing, just really stands out to me as a mistake. And I want to be clear, this isn't about saving the church. If the church has to come down, then it has to come down. I just don't think that's the only option, and I'm not here to die on that hill. What I care about is that we've truly explored every option of that whole block and do the absolute best that we can for the city. I know the council and the city manager have spent a lot of time on this, and I respect that, but from the public side, there's been very little input. We had one TIF hearing where every speaker was opposed, one meeting last week where I was the only commenter. For a project this big, that doesn't really seem like enough. And by the time the details were made to the public about the project, the vote was scheduled for barely a week later. And that's not a lot of time. And for something that I think is this significant, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask you to delay the vote for one month. One other thing I noticed in the agenda is that there's minutes from the TIF hearing, and I can't tell whether those are being approved tonight or what that is, but I just wanted to say that I had wrote a prepared statement that night and emailed it to Jeremy, and I noticed that it wasn't in the record in the agenda packet online. So if we're going to keep detailed accounts, I'd just like to ask that the record be accurate and include that I said, or any of those minutes are approved.
No, I can answer that one.
Yes.
I put those in there. They're not going to be approved by the council because they weren't taken by the council, they were taken by the TIF attorneys. But I just included them in the package, so the council got them.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure what that was, because I saw it was in the agenda.
Yeah, because they're not going to be approved by our council.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up. That's all I can say.
And you wanted to make a note of the minutes to add?
I was just saying, I just saw what was listed on the TIF notes, whatever I said wasn't in there, so.
Okay.
I'll go one paragraph. I don't know how my time works.
Right, okay.
Okay, thank you. So I'll end at where I began. I really don't enjoy being up here, but this is just too important to stay quiet. My simple respectful request is that you vote tonight to move this decision back to next month's meeting and give us all the council and public alike a little more time just to be absolutely sure. Thank you.
Any further public comments for tonight?
Yeah, we have time to comment on each individual thing, or can we do it now?
We'll go ahead and do that now. If we have questions on an item relevant to you, we may ask questions when we get there.
Item three, vacating Council Street. Sunbrook is north of it, and he's going to be against it.
Could I have your name, please?
Jeff Markler.
Okay, thank you.
And basically, you know, if that street gets blocked off, then everybody's going to be driving in from Lower Avenue and turning around in my son's driveways to go back out. There's also an alley between the two garages that people still access, and it's not like people don't use the road. They use the street all the time. So I'm just giving my opinion to my son. He's against closing it off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comment for tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to item one, which is the mid-year financial review. And we'll introduce Steve Lico and Evan Solomon from Letterback and Amen LLC.
Okay. Did you maybe want to introduce anything?
No.
Okay.
It's a midterm report.
Absolutely. So once a year about this time, we typically come to either a council meeting or a committee at the whole, and we do a little bit more of a comprehensive look at the finances through the first six months of the new fiscal year. So that's what we're here tonight to do. Before we jump into that, I guess I do want to say we do have a pretty final draft of the audit from fiscal '24, and just wanted to give a quick sneak preview. It seemed to be a relatively favorable year for the city. In total, the governmental funds across the board, or in aggregate, I guess, showed increases, including the general fund, which was positive to see. The, in aggregate, the three proprietary funds, so the sewer, the solid waste, and the golf course also showed increases in net position, which again was a great sign to see. And then the pension funding percentages also rose as they have over the past couple of years as well. So the police was up over 51% funded, and the fire was up over 41% funded, which has continued the trend that we've seen over the past four or five years. Otherwise, to dig into the packet, there were four kind of stapled packets that each of you has in front of you right now. The third and the fourth, I'm not really going to touch on. That's just the full detail. Thought it was important for you guys to have the information, but I'm not going to go through mine high. Nobody wants to do that. So I'll start with the first report, which says June 2025 mid-year financial review. First, looking at the cash balances. This gives you a five-year comparison of what cash looked like by fund for the past five years, and it gives a couple of notes relating to, are we in the range of where we should be or where we would like to be? And there's a few notes if it appears that it shouldn't be. There's typically a reason why, why it looks that way. But in total, cash from June 2024 to cash June 2025 has gone down about $300,000. There's been a lot of capital spending over the past year, past several years, so that was to be expected. Other than that, all of the balances by fund are within range. The general fund had about $2.2 million as of the end of June 2025. The bottom of the second page, we focus mostly on the general fund, because that's the main operating fund of the city. So we do have the data there for June 2025 by itself, as well as the six months pending June 2025. At this point in time, the revenues are slightly ahead of where we would want them or expect them to be. Sales taxes continue to be strong and be slightly ahead of where we anticipated it coming in at. The ambulance building numbers are also slightly ahead of where we expected them. They're ahead of where they were at last year and the prior year as well. One note on those is that we did have the GEMT payback to the state that I believe we just paid a couple of weeks ago. So there will be an adjustment in those revenue numbers to come, but even after the adjustment, it still appears to be strong, and we're happy with where those numbers are coming in and the growth that we're seeing there. Another note that I mentioned was on the sales tax. Sales taxes is one of, if not the most important revenue source to the city's overall finances. On the next page, we show trend data, looking back to 2018 through current, and we give you a monthly comparison. In aggregate, over the past couple of years, I mean, we used to receive about $170,000 a month. Now we're up to $212,000 a month. So annually, it's up $600,000 for the past seven or so years, which is significant, and it's helped with some of the costs that have also been rising over that period from the pension and salaries for the marketing units and other things that's gone up over that point in time. So the sales taxes seem stable, continues to increase, which is all positive. Page four shows you some of the other major revenue sources of the city. Some of the other state shared revenues are your income tax, your telecom, your non-home rule sales tax, replacement tax, and use tax. For the most part, most of those have also seen increases. Income tax has gone up. Your non-home rule sales tax rises just as the sales tax does. I did want to point out a couple there. Replacement tax, 2022 and 2023, replacement tax went through the roof. It turned out the state was over allocating, so that is the reason why you've seen that drop by more than half over the past couple of years. The good news out of that is that the state has said that they anticipate replacement tax double up slightly, and so I think it's kind of bottomed out, and we should see some slight increases moving forward from that revenue source. And then another one you might notice is the use tax appears to have dropped by 40% this year. The state made a change with certain types of really online orders, and its use tax is no longer applicable to it. It's now sales tax, so that's partially why the sales tax has gone up, and the use tax has really plummeted. So I don't anticipate that changing, but it should, for the most part, offset itself. In terms of the expenditure side, which is on the last page there, again, we're slightly above the 50% target through half the year, but it's really where we would expect to be. We've paid off all of our debt service for the year from the general fund, so that's a major expense that's already hit in the first half. So to still be on pace with 50% of the year is where we would like to be at this point in time. Do I have any questions before I move on, just from the general fund? If not, the next thing, the next stapled packet, it's just two pages there. It's really just high-level summaries of the other funds, and I'm not going to go through every single one. I'm just going to hit a couple of the high points. It is important to note that the property tax cycle, we've not received any property taxes, which is typically, they're received July through December. So some of the funds that are heavily dependent on property taxes, so the TIF funds, most of the TIF funds, now there's a couple others that are heavily reliant. You won't see the revenues there yet, but those will come in in July through the rest of the year. Hotel motel revenue appears to be down. Some of that is timing with when things get reported and the taxes get permitted. But even taking away the timing issue, I do think we're going to come up a little bit short of the budget there. So I think that's one thing to note and keep an eye on moving forward, is where those revenues are going to come in. The sewer funds, those are always a little tricky because we separate them out into four separate funds, when in reality, they're really reported in the audit as one aggregate fund. So I know we see, even in the cash position, the operating fund is showing negative, but the construction fund is showing with funds. So when I kind of look at it, I aggregate them together and make sure that in total, we're looking good. And they do. Like I said, there's been some large sewer projects over the past couple of years. I know you had elected through the budget process to use some of your reserves to fund those projects, so the transfer hasn't happened, but that's still on the docket for this year. Same with the non-home rule sales tax was also budgeted as a deficit this year. There were some capital initiatives that you, as council, wanted to get into the budget. So it looks positive as of now, but it was budgeted as a deficit. Assuming those capital initiatives happen, the transfer will happen later on in the year. Same with the MFP fund. It's looking strong as of right now, but again, it was purposely budgeted as a deficit to use some of those reserves on some capital projects. And I think if, unless anybody has any questions, that was the level I was planning to get into tonight.
Thank you, Steve.
We'll probably see you again in November, I'm guessing.
Yes.
For our discussion. Any other further questions before we move to item two? We'll move to item two, ordinance 2025-28. Ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a tax increment financing district redevelopment agreement. I get a motion and second.
Second.
Motion by Scott Shire and second by Dave Reed. Go into discussion.
Well, we've discussed this a lot times. Early, soon if you can project for the city have approved. It's 85% of the incremental for your 23-year life of the project we've committed to reimbursing the company for costs that are eligible to be reimbursed under our statute. So there's no upfront money coming from the city. Is there any questions that you may answer?
Well, I went through this a few times, to make sure I didn't miss anything, and maybe I did. I didn't see any mention in here about the 1% sales tax, which I think is a good thing.
Right. We're not offering sales taxes.
Yeah, we were expecting, at least I was expecting Vex to insist on reimbursement of sales tax. I know they have done it in other projects, and that's pretty common in these projects.
Yeah, one of the concerns I would have if we start down that path is that a lot of their sales could be cannibalized from other businesses in Streeter, and so if we reimburse them, reimburse their expenses using sales taxes, that could result in a net decrease of sales tax revenue to the city. Do I cut that?
I know this sounds like a lot of money, and it is. 85% of the incremental, going back to them, that means we get 15% of all the growth. And $11 million project is going to be considerable amount of real estate revenue. 15% is a lot better than the 0% we're getting on four vacant properties over there now.
Well, Vex told us that if we're unable to approve this agreement, that they would likely not proceed with the property. And so the monies that are going to be reimbursed from them would not be available to the city for other purposes, and we would be left with the property in its current condition. They told us that they would love to just sell it and just move on. You are correct that they have had similar development agreements in other cities in recent years. I believe the two that I look at most closely was Peoria Heights and Amen.
I just noted, the current block is generating to the city $79.6323 a year on property tax. And with the increment in reimbursing, once Vex pays our tax and we reimburse the 85%, we're estimating $25,000 to $30,000 a year into the TIF fund on top of that $79.63.
You're looking at an $11 million investment. At the most, we're going to give them 2.5 back over 20-some years. It's still $8.5 million net investment in our community. And that's substantial. And I've always said that when somebody comes to us and says, "We want to invest in the community," we shouldn't say, "Well, here are the hoops you got to jump through." We should say, "Thank you for wanting to invest in our community, and what can we do to help you make this project happen?" So I don't think we need to delay the vote.
I'll go through. I went through the timeline just because I wanted to see how long we were discussing what's going on. So the first meeting that anyone from the city had with Vex was in November of 2023. By December, it was already on Facebook. I saw a local social media group. Oh, they went back and looked to see when the first one came up for Vex Streeter. It was December 2023, right after the property closed. So the former church property was closed in December 2023, and then the remaining properties were purchased April 2024. Shaw Local had an article in September 2024, from what I could see. And then we've had, on April 23rd, or April 2, or April 2nd, council meeting, we set a public hearing, and so there's a public hearing April 23rd for amending TIF 2 to remove properties. Additional action on the May 7th council meeting, we added three TIF ordinances. The first two are to set the public hearing that was held in July, and the third one created the interested parties registry for the proposed TIF 6, which sent all the mailings out. Hearings were set and held July 2nd, one at 6:00 and one at 6:15 for TIF 2 and TIF 6. July 16th, council approved amending TIF 2 and creation of TIF 6 officially. And then last week, we discussed the agreement that we're voting on tonight. So all in all, we're a little over 18 months moving forward with the project. So just wanted, I guess I wanted to mention that. I also found it interesting, in 1932, on the same property, Pickworth's Phillips 66 gas station opened, and it looks like, again, we're, you know, Phillips 66 is slated for it. Some other misconceptions that I've seen, at least on social media, was a truck stop. And what does that mean? And I think people think of like a Love's or the IAV Truck Stop or something. Really, a truck stop per state code is a three-acre site. Someone asked me two days ago, "I heard there's a truck wash with the car wash, and it's a commercial car wash." I know this summer, I have seen multiple people complaining about car washes in Streeter, and a lot of them were going to Amidale or Peru to get their car washed. So this is a commercial plan, and the deal is contingent upon a commercial car wash also being part of this project. So if there's no car wash, then there's no TIF agreement as well. So those are just to get some chatter and rumblings that I saw that I just wanted to make sure were addressed tonight.
One last comment. I'd like to thank Mr. Phelan. Even though we don't agree on this, I do respect your passion on this, and you brought up a few things that made me go back and rethink, and I spent more time thinking about this project and the long-term effect because of some of the things you said, but I still come up with the same result. Thank you for pushing your agenda on it. We need more people to be passionate and come forward on different issues.
I thank you for being respectful to council and that, you know, coming in hot and heavy and screaming at us. We appreciate, we do appreciate that you put thought into it.
I get that at the coffee shop, screamed at.
So any further discussion? Are we ready to call the roll from council? Okay, clerk, call the roll, please.
Dango?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Beadie?
Aye. Item three, ordinance 2025-28. Ordinance authorizing the vacation of a public city right-of-way to vacate 140 feet of the 50-feet north-south council road located east of 818 Mazor Street, Streeter, Illinois, La Salle, and Lexington counties. I get a motion and second.
So a motion and second.
Okay, councilman Gary with the motion, and Shire with the second. And discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So, yeah, the petitioner, I believe, is here. I'd like to speak to them, but I put in a request to vacate 140 feet north of Mazor Street on the former, or on the unimproved, disgravel council street right-of-way. In our review of it, there's a, and I talked to the only American water, there's a water main that does run down that right-of-way. So they're requesting, even though easement would be maintained, they requested that it not be vacated, so I put it in my recommendation to you guys that it not be vacated. I've had several phone calls and calls from the gentleman that was here tonight from his son requesting that it not be vacated, but if you'd like to hear from the petitioner, I think they're here. But that's the city's position. There is at least one utility, the water main, that runs down that street, so closing it would, because the plan, if approved, is for the petitioner to install a fence and basically build across it so you couldn't go down. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? So there's a petitioner here for the requister?
Yeah, that was me. I'm John Warwick.
Hi, John. If there's any, I don't know if you had, wanted to, if you had anything you wanted to mention to council?
Sure. I am John Warwick. I live at 818 Mazor Street. I've lived there for 21 years. I have maintained the alley. I've maintained the field next to it, and I've put gravel down every year. The city doesn't come out. They don't do anything with the road. They don't, they don't plow it in the wintertime. I do, I put the gravel out there by hand. I've been working on it, and I try to keep it as nice as possible. I get a lot of traffic, especially drug traffic. I've had Officer Dodge come by my house several times to pick up baggies, purple and blue heroin and fentanyl baggies. He takes them in his possession. I have three nephews and two sons that come over, and I just want to keep it clean. And I think by vacating the alley, it will slow down the traffic significantly, and then we can each have our own private drive, and hopefully, everything can be peaceful, and we don't have to continue picking up all the trash all the time. That's what I'm after. Thank you.
Any discussion from council on this? Is there, I guess my question, any other options outside of vacating the alley?
I do have one thing, if I can say. Sorry. When I talked to Jeremy, he told me that they could not, he said there was a possibility that they wouldn't be able to close it all the way because there's a water main that goes through there. No, it's not necessarily in the alley. It's 15 or 20 feet into the field, and it runs through to a fire hydrant. And he said if we wanted to run a fence across there, we could, and he would come and he would put the appropriate signage up to block it. And he said if they ever needed to come in to maintenance that line in any way, that they would just remove what they need to, and then they would put it back when it was finished. And that's what he told me. And then he said as far as people turning in and then backing out, he said that would only be briefly until people understand that it is blocked off.
And I did, if vacated, I did tell Mr. Warwick that, that in the event the water company tore through there, they'd have to replace what was there across that easement, so.
So, but they have requested it not be vacated, just to prevent that issue.
Doesn't a request like this usually go to the plan commission first?
No, typically not, of like a rezone or oversized garage or subbacks would. But usually they come straight to us with the alleyway vacations. I don't want to delay or wait, but I kind of wonder if we could maybe mark where the water line is or have a flag and just go look at it once that's shown and just see it. And that's my.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah. So we'll table it and then see if we can get Julie or our company to mark where it is, and then just go see the flags and see if there's another solution for it. I want to be sympathetic to the issues that you're having, but I also want to want to cause chaos with the neighbors as well. So let's see what, if we can find something in the middle.
Mr. Warwick, do you know what kind of fence you're planning on putting up yet? Any ideas?
Not really. I just want it blocked off to stop the traffic coming through. That's pretty much it. And in the future, like, I would like to be able to spend my own money black topping it because I just want to have it nice for myself. I just, I just want a private drive. I just want to stop the traffic. It's too much. We have a gazebo in the middle of our house between that and the garage, and we're trying to sit out there, and people drive through 40 miles an hour to throw gravel. I've had yellow people because my kids have always gotten hit. Or almost gotten hit. My dogs almost got hit. It's just ridiculous.
If council's okay with motion to table and then get the water lines marked, so I think you made a motion, Tim? I get the second. Okay, Daniel Danko with the second.
With Danko.
Daniel with the second. Item four, ordinance 20. Are you going to call the? Oh, we do need to call. I'm sorry.
Danko?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Bead.
Aye. Item four, ordinance 202530, says an ordinance amending section 5.08040 of Streeter Municipal Code concerning arcade licenses and section 3.48100.a of the Streeter Municipal Code concerning amusement device license fees for the City of Streeter, La Salle, and Livingston Counties. I get a motion and second.
Uh huh, second.
Okay, Danko with the motion and Reed with the second. And discussion.
Well, the ordinance before you tonight was written by our city attorney. Currently, our code restricts the service of alcohol in arcades and in arcades, any business establishment with more than eight, more than eight devices. The ordinance will exclude bowling alleys from the definition of arcade bowling, the one bowling alley we can't bowl. I guess we have more than four bowling alleys that we have. Both have license licenses. So we'd allow the bowling alley to put more machines in their business away from the bar so they can attract, I guess, more business, you know, camera type functions, different experiences.
These are amusement devices, not gaming machines. I would.
Right.
That's, that's clear. So we're looking at pinball, video games. They're trying.
And do we know the layout of where these are going to be in the building? Are they going to be in the old, you know, trophy room, pro shop, I guess?
I'm not sure where the final location is. We had amended. Our concern at our, when we discussed this was making sure that there's an area where we don't have kids playing the amusing devices of the bar area.
Right, where alcohol served.
Where alcohol served. So it's the modification, basically says shall not be in the bar area except for pool tables and juke boxes. I was going to mention maybe we should add dartboards to that as just maybe amend that or modify, just add one more without making it two. I don't want to list 16 different things you can have.
And if we want to amend that tonight, we can always retype it and you can sign it. I guess I can think of our ordinance being used at the house, but I think.
I think under our hold it is.
Have a surprise at juke boxes or, or juice boxes.
Our ordinance is called juice boxes.
Yes.
Well, there for you if they've got orders.
So we could amend that. It really goes, Mr. Danko with the motion, you want to amend it to include dartboards?
Any other discussion for this one?
I would, I would just also give the amendment was to the license fee provision as purely discussion.
If no further discussion, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Yep, just before we do that. So we have Mr. Danko.
Amending.
Yes, they agree to the amendment. Mr. Reed, you are the second. Do you also agree?
Thank you. Okay, clerk, call the roll, please.
Danko?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Bead.
Aye. Item five, ordinance 202531, ordinance amending title two of the Streeter Municipal Code by adding chapter 2.22 to adopt a remote participation in meetings policy for the City of Streeter, La Salle, and Livingston Counties, Illinois. I get a motion and second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Gary and Mr. Shire with the second. Want to discussion?
Well, this was also discussed at our, through the whole meeting. Our attorney preferred an ordinance for your consideration. It allows for remote participation as long as there's a form at the physically present end of the meeting and or the statement of the meeting to allow for the remote participation. Once that is done, the participant that's calling in would have full rights as the people's president.
And to be clear, this is a blank remote participation during COVID, which allowed at any reason, you have to meet one of the sketch or requirements in order to participate in vote. So for councils where they have snowbirds that go away for the winter, that would not be allowable for using remote participation.
Now, just hypothetical, if somebody's on vacation, that doesn't qualify.
Correct.
But would it be legal for them to call in and listen to the meeting? Like they can't vote, they can't?
Yeah, they could listen. I mean, is this a live feed? No.
No.
Yeah, certainly we could let them listen in, but they wouldn't be able to participate. They would not even be able to discuss.
Okay, not even comment?
Correct.
Okay.
And just, I guess for clarity's sake, the five reasons are personal illness or disability, employment purposes or, or the business of the city. So you're traveling for work or for, for city business, not playing, no vacation, a family or other emergency, unexpected childcare, childcare applications, or a reason permitting remote attendance in the Open Meetings Act, if they add something later down the road, since we can do that. Any other discussion? Clerk, color roll, please.
Danko?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Bead.
Aye. Item six, a motion to accept a recommendation from the Streeter Park and Open Spaces Board. I get a motion and second. Well, this is, to further, the board is recommending approval from the city council to allow a coed soccer league to create a soccer field and utilize Oakland Park for their games under the following provisions to begin March 2026. I get a motion and second.
I'll make that motion, second.
Mr. Reed and Mr. Danko with the second. And we'll go to discussion. I don't know if.
Well, I think.
You ever mentioned this one?
The written recommendation pretty much provides all this. It all started with Paul Paul, he suggested that, so they're looking at what they actually want to, and all that, all the works that's gone out there. There's some means to feel that we're going to have to fill in some holes and seeding that. But I think we can get it going pretty quickly here. And so I think it would be, the park is really underutilized currently.
I know we lost, we lost a lot of trees with the tornado going through there. Is there a big enough open space for a soccer?
There is, I believe she said it was a U6 field and maybe a small area to the side.
They don't want a full field.
Okay.
Because that requires to, in front, you've got to remember it's for adults.
It's an adult, a coed. We can't run as fast as ten year olds.
It's like playing basketball. They want to be out, social. It's a good activity. So we'll, we'll be working with the group and getting its size appropriately with my advice.
I think we have a comment from the crowd.
My name's Cameron Myers. I'm on the board at Open Bible Church. We own the parking lot to the Oakland Park School, the old school and the one across the street. That is private parking. My concern, our concern was the parking situation for this new project.
Could we add parking on the south side along James Street?
Well, there is some parking available. There's also street parking, private parking on it. But you need to put up signs and that, and let the people, participants know that you utilize it.
Yeah, because we got stuff going on every night of the week, plus the extra traffic wear and tear on our lot. So that was our concern.
I don't, I've never heard anyone suggest that they were going to use the parking lot in church.
Well, I just know like when we used to be on Powell Street, Bosnick, for example, they would use our parking lot all the time. And there's times where we didn't have parking for our turf service. So that's my concern.
I know the league was going to, they were planning some days, it's mid-March through May and mid-August through October, allow public use when they're not using it. But we can, we can put that out there and use it as well as maybe note it. We'll have an agreement with them for use of the, for use of the property. So we can, I think, add that to there.
I think everyone would be motivated not to utilize someone else's parking lot without permission. You would always have to let them have them told if they didn't comply. I think it'd be a good problem to have if we find more parking, you know, to get the parking lot that's already there.
I will.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, we also have Genji Park with a parking lot on that parkway.
Well, we'll say with the James Street parking situation too, when they do the big meets and stuff, they're, they're parking all the way down Point. It's all over the place, the business across the street.
Well, if we have to make more parking, we will.
Yeah, let's stop.
Those are, I think, personally feel that those are good problems to have, that these facilities are being utilized, people are coming out, socializing, kids are, people are, you know, that are actually engaged in the sporting activity. It's a healthy activity.
Let's, let's get the league started. And Cameron, if parking does become an issue, please keep us aware of it.
Okay.
And we'll figure it out as we go.
As we go.
So we do have firm now to march to redo that. And as I just mentioned with the, with the tornado, there were enough trees removed. I think there's one stump that needs to be grinded out or removed. But other than that, there's no further trees or anything. Just some, a little bit of leveling and seeding and work on that side.
Sounds nice. Hopefully it's a strong league. Dave, are you going to play?
No.
I used to run a lot. I can't run anymore. I had a broken knee, so I've got a good excuse.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? Clerk, color roll, please.
Danko?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye. Item seven, consent agenda, request a motion and second to approve the consent agenda with fund warrant totals of $1,030,644.55. Also approve meeting, minutes of meetings of the city council from this committee and the whole July 8th, regular city council meeting July 16th, as well as the financial reports for the month of July 2025. I get a motion and second. Tim, Gary and Daniel Danko with the second. Any discussion? Clerk, color roll, please.
Danko?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Bead.
Aye. Item eight, city official comments.
Last week, I said this is the last meeting before Pluto Fest, and I was wrong. This is the last meeting for Pluto Fest. So I do want to remind everybody, Pluto Fest on September 13th in City Park. It's not a big celebration, but it's a nice celebration. We'll have vendors, we'll have music, we'll have a beer wine tasting event, and it'll be in conjunction with the Food Truck Festival, which I'm sure the mayor will be mentioning. So I just wanted to throw that out there again, to put that on your calendar, September 13th. Also, at the end of next week, August 30th, I'm going to be giving a talk on a character from Streeter's history named John Williams. He started a lot of the union activity in, in central Illinois. Actually, he was the originator and the first president of the United Mine Workers of America. It started right here in Streeter. He was also Streeter's first city clerk. So interesting story. And I'll be giving that talk on, on John Williams on August 30th at the Streeter Public Library. It's Labor Day weekend with him being a big labor leader. He's known as the first unofficial Secretary of Labor of the United States. And he's the most famous man from Streeter you've never heard of. So please come. I hate talking to an empty room. So please come and learn about John Williams.
I wanted to back up what Dave said to Bill Phelan earlier. Bill, I deeply appreciate your comments and your passion for the city. And I encourage you to stay vocal with things going on in the town and continue coming back to us and keep these open lines of communication. Good communication is the best path forward for success. So thank you very much. That's all I have.
Anything from staff?
I just have a reminder for training for Open Meetings Act and FOIA training. I think you two are open. Will be in local.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I'll get my Open Meetings Act certification, certification at the.
IML.
IML. I just, if you could send me the link to take the test.
Anything else? We'll just remind cruise night is the 30th of August this year. We'll just remind, cruise night is the 30th of August this year. The 23rd is the Streeter Overdose Memorial Walk at City Park. And the Labor Day Parade is through the chamber. And I know that you, the chamber is looking for additional entries for that parade. Our next council meeting will be September? September 9th, Tuesday, that's our committee of the whole. September 17th will be our regular meeting. So, the item that was tabled would probably be back, I would say, September 17th, for, to open that back up. I'll request a motion and second to adjourn.
So moved.
Reed, with the motion?
Second.
Mr. Shire with the seconds. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Dinko?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Shire?
Aye.
Mayor Beattie?
Aye.